Good evening and welcome to the November 16th, 2022 meeting of the Lower Merion Board of Commissioners. Before we start, please silence your cell phones. Equipment for the hearing impaired is available if needed. And if you're going to address the board, because tonight we have a public hearing on the budget, please speak directly into the microphones. So with that, will the November 16th, 2022 meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Township Lower Merion please come to order? And I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Bernheim and Ms. G Kramer have asked to be excused. Mr. Churchill.
Here.
Mr. Courtney.
Present.
Mr. Gavin.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Grimes.
Here.
Ms. S Kramer.
Here.
Mr. McComb.
Here.
Mr. McCann.
Here.
Ms. O'Neil.
Here.
Mr. Stevenson.
Present.
Mr. Whalen.
Here.
Mr. Zello.
Here.
Mr. Sinna.
Present.
Mr. President, we have a forum.
Thank you very much, Madam Secretary. As some of you may know, Josh Mackley, our LMTV cable technician since 2007, passed away on October 30th after a long battle with cancer. Josh was a familiar figure to many of us, whether it was out in the field or in the studio filming various LMTV programs, or since COVID, sitting here in the boardroom with us, helping to moderate Zoom. We all knew Josh, his booming voice and his rare but infectious smile. Among Josh's accomplishments was LMTV's long-running and very popular Lower Merion history program, as well-
As well as the Bits of History shorts. He was known for his love of history, all things train-related, and photography. One of the most remarkable things about Josh was his ability to persevere during his illness. He never let on that he was struggling or in pain. He performed his job with composure and with grace. He will be truly missed.
Please join me in rising now, as we have a moment in silence in memory of Josh Mackley. Thank you. Commissioner McKean asked to add a few words.
Yes, thank you, President Sinna. I had the privilege to work with Josh on a number of LMTV projects over the last couple of years, and sometimes even some of my family members would appear too. And he's just a warm, modest, funny, friendly guy. And going into just a TV studio for government TV, it just doesn't come naturally to a lot of people to appear before the cameras. And Josh made everybody who came down feel very, very comfortable. He was just so welcoming. And I texted my kids after I found out what happened, because that's what I communicate with my kids. And they were really sad. My daughter wrote back, "He let us be crazy." You know, just a guy who was fun and friendly. I had no idea that he had an illness, he'd been battling cancer for three years. He kept that inside. So I think it's just a real loss to the township. And I'm deeply sorry about what happened to him. And just wish the best for him and his family now.
Thanks, Mike. I'm going to move on to the approval of minutes. I move for the approval of the minutes of a special meeting of the Board of Commissioners held October 12th, 2022, and a stated meeting of the Board of Commissioners held on October 19th, 2022, as distributed. Thank you Vice President Gavin for the second. All votes in favor? Opposed? Sentenced? That passes. A few announcements. The Board met in executive session on November 2nd and earlier this evening to receive reports from its professional staff regarding ward maps, personnel matters, legal matters, the Lower Merion School District, and coronavirus. Thursday, November 24th, 2022, Thanksgiving Day is a legal holiday, and the Township Administration Building and Libraries will be closed for business, and there will be no refuse to recycling collection. The second public hearing on the proposed 2023 budget and proposed 2023 through 2028 capital improvement plan will be held on Wednesday, November 30th, 2022, at approximately 6:00 p.m. An Ardmore Master Plan Workshop, excuse me, is being held tomorrow evening, Thursday, November 17th, from 5:00 p.m. until 9:00 p.m. at the Ardmore Avenue Community Center. The workshop is an opportunity to learn about and provide input on this important community vision. And lastly, the township is participating in Operation Safe Homes this month. This is a free gun-turn-in event sponsored by the Montgomery County District Attorney of the Township. They're unloaded firearms at the Lower Merion Police Department, 71 East Lancaster Avenue in Ardmore, on Saturday, November 19th, from 9:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. And more information can be found on the Montgomery County District Attorney's website at www.montco PA dot org slash DA. So our next two agenda items provide opportunities for members of the public to address the Board on things that are not about the budget and proposed capital improvement plan. That will be done later. So this is the opportunity to address the Board on other items. We will start with public privilege of the floor, which is a section of our meeting where members of the public may address the Board on any non-agenda items or any other public matters in which the township has jurisdiction or authority. We're going to ask for all of these, that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, you may have five minutes. And is there anyone in the room who wishes to take advantage of public privilege? If so, please come up to this podium.
My name is Ben Meyer. I live on Rockland Road in Penwind. Thank you for serving all of us in the community, and I imagine it's gotten a little more challenging over the years. But I want to point out a few things about the fields over at the new middle school. A prior Board here voted to demolish the Clermont, an historic building, on March 20th, 2019, which was about three and a half years ago. According to the records on the township website, Lower Merion School District purchased 1,800 West Montgomery Avenue, which is part of that Oakwell, I believe the Oakwell mansion, that's part of it, prior to that, two months prior to that, on January 25th, 2019. And roughly two months before that vote. My point is that pretty much the Board, and not necessarily everybody here on this Board, but a prior Board, knew about this. It was common knowledge. The public knew about it. There was a lot of transparency, I think, with the school district. 1835 was actually purchased later than that vote in August of 2019. But my point is that this was done. The public knew about it. And we all knew which sports middle schools play. I mean, there's quite a few sports, and they all don't fit on that new middle school site. And three and a half years ago, a prior Board cast the dice, pretty much, in that respect. So to tell the kids from Penwind and Gladwin, we approved the 100 and roughly $20 million middle school, then to tell the exact same parents and kids, "Well, we're going to deny these Title IX rights and force you to have an additional 40 minutes by the time you go to, say, the polo field or back and forth," you know, it seems a bit arbitrary, it seems a little fiscally questionable to do that, to tell the same kids that. I believe Lower Merion School District is replanting most of the trees, and my understanding is that 230 of those trees are elm trees, which probably need to come down anyway due to some elm disease type of issue. I hope my facts are accurate. I don't want to... And I believe you folks had hired an environmental czar. My question to you is, did they calculate all the extra buses afferring folks to another further field, like polo fields, other fields? If you go from middle school to polo fields, back to middle school, back to Penwind, it's going to eat up a lot of bus time. And of course, Lower Merion parents, being who we are, are going to pick up our kids sometimes there, so we're going to have additional cars going to the polo field. You're talking about a lot of extra traffic, a lot of extra miles. It really does add up. I did the calculation, it adds up to hundreds of trees and carbon. For, you know, if your czar can replicate that, that's fine, using relatively efficient kind of bus numbers. So one of your biggest complaints, I think, is traffic. And so you're going to get around that rush hour time period quite a bit of extra traffic. Just if I could finish up one or two sentences. Anyway, these kids are in your hands, you know, will be in your hands once these votes come up. And there's a history of some school inequality in Lower Merion that occurred several years ago. And I hope that you'll consider all these things. And I feel like some of the folks that are new to this discussion are about four years late, because that's when really the die was cast. But those same folks are going to enjoy walking their dogs and playing on the fields and defending these same fields, I'm almost done, these new fields, once they're built. So thank you for your time.
Sorry to go over. Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Anyone else in the room wish to take advantage of public privilege on the floor?
Laura Gillen-Haverford. I have to say, I was just a little bit embarrassed at last week's meeting, because I had specifically invited some high schoolers to observe, because I thought the redistricting topic would be of interest. And I don't know what's going on here, whether you all need to go do some team building or maybe go down to the new Manitani Steel Works and get together outside of this, but it seemed like there was a little bit of bubbling disappointment among you. And I just would ask that you not assume ill will of any of each other. You know, if you feel like someone spoke in an aggressive tone, don't respond in kind. Let's maintain the decorum that this forum deserves. It's also not appropriate to pass judgment on other elected officials, and I've heard it too many times, you know, from your position on the dais, it's not your job to hold the school board accountable. That's our job. We elected them, we elected you. We hold them accountable, we hold you accountable. If you feel as a constituent that you need to address a school board on an issue, I absolutely would encourage you to do so, but clearly stating first that you're doing that as a constituent and never from this forum. Should you hear from your constituents that they have a concern about the school board, you would encourage them to go speak to those elected officials. And I would also ask the same when information is presented by staff. Any information about school taxes, to the extent that it absolutely is necessary to present, should be fairly presented. I understand that you may get questions from your constituents regarding taxes, and you may need to speak to them about the various taxing authorities. But it's not appropriate to just show a chart without school taxes and a big red portion of the pie chart, and then a sample tax chart. If you're going to provide some information, you can't stop there. You have to provide a little bit more insight. And speaking in very general terms, from the presentation I saw, something less than half of the township revenue comes from real estate taxes. Something a little more than half of the township funds get expended on personnel costs. There are just over 700 township staff, just a little bit more than 500 full-time equivalents. The school district gets the vast majority of their revenue from real estate taxes. They can't charge recreation fees for school sports, they can't charge sewage fees for use of the girls' and boys' bathrooms. They don't have half of the revenue income streams that you all have. And their expenses for personnel are significantly higher. They have double the amount of staff that you all have. When you're presenting budget information at a public meeting, if you absolutely have to talk about the school district, then add in a chart that talks about the differences in their income and expenses versus the township income and expenses. And please change that chart color to something that's a little more friendly than the bright red. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else in the room wish to take advantage of public privilege? Seeing none, Jody, do you have anyone online?
Ms. Seltzer is online.
Okay. Ms. Seltzer?
Um, do you have a video?
Um, I tried to click it, it didn't do anything. It's not allowing me-
There we go. Okay, we got you now. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
I tried, I did try. I know that you'd like to see us.
We're good now.
All right. The proposed new ward maps released by the building and planning, at the building and planning meeting, have an error that wasn't recognized. The new maps are supposed to consider congressional and assembly lines. In proposed Ward 12, which is mostly the 5th Congressional District, there are 157 people who are actually in the 4th Congressional District, and therefore should be in Ward 13, because that's the closest. The problem is, that puts Ward 13 well over the mean population goal of 4,545 for each ward, and takes the deviation, which is supposed to be under 10% to close to 15. Another issue I would like clarification on, and I watched the replay of that meeting several times. The solicitor said that the magisterial districts have to be considered. But I don't understand why we consider old magisterial district lines. It makes no sense, especially when the new ward lines are the basis for the magisterial district lines. And because the maps are being submitted to be advertised, I know this is, this part is the second thing, but all right. Because the maps are being submitted to be advertised, and they have these crucial problems, they really aren't ready to be advertised today. Another comment that I would like to make is that it used to be that the intergovernmental meetings were done in public, they're now done in private. And I would like to know why that is no longer something that is on the schedule. The meetings between Narberth Lower Merion and the school district. So that's all for this section. And I thank you very much for your attention.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Seltzer. Jody, is there anyone else online?
There is not.
So now is the opportunity for any Board member to respond to any of the comments. I'm going to go first. So the first is, Ms. Seltzer, thank you for your comments. Your comments about the redistricting, I'm looking at the TV as if she's still there. The comments about the redistricting, that is going to be an agenda item tonight, right? And so while, you know, it seemed efficient for you to speak to it at that point, it's probably inefficient for the Board to respond to you at this point. Maybe we can just carry those comments over to when we actually have it as an agenda item, and bundle them all together, and I'm sure those issues will come up. And including Ward 12, which is the ward I represent, has an interesting congressional district issue. And then Ms. Gillen, two responses to your comments. The first is I'm going to respectfully disagree on the benefit of our Chief Financial Officer presenting, you know, what fraction of people's typical tax bills, you know, the average tax bill comes from the township versus other taxing entities, like the county and the school district. I think that's fair information to put out without having to get too far into the weeds about what generates each of those, especially because we cannot speak to that very well. It's just a point of information for residents about, like, where does your tax bill go? Like, this much goes to this entity, and this much goes to that entity, and this much goes to that entity. As for decorum, that'll be the word I'll use for it. One of the terrific things about this Board is that we can disagree, and sometimes disagree vehemently, but we're disagreeing constructively. And if we're disagreeing, it's because we're passionate about a topic. And, you know, we listen to each other, we circle back, and we continue to be, honestly, on this Board, friends as well as professional colleagues. And it's a terrific culture that we have on this Board. I disagree with the characterization about there being some, you know, leaned ill will that's bubbling up. I think we have maps that people care about. And what you see is people, you know, strongly, but, you know, to the most part respectfully disagreeing. And if it ever crosses that line, I think we take a deep breath and we come back, and we're as professional as we typically are. And so I'm delighted to be on this Board, in large part because, honestly, I feel like my colleagues respect me. I feel like I respect all of them, and I think we all listen to each other. And it's one of the best boards I've ever been. Anyway, those are my comments. Any other commissioners wish to respond? Yeah, Commissioner Gordon.
Thank you, President Sinna. I just wanted to respond to the question about the lack of intergovernmental meetings as I take some responsibility there. Traditionally, there's always been a private and a public meeting when the intergovernmental committee met. We have not had a public meeting since spring of 2020, and part of the reason for that is in that meeting, we decided that two school board directors and two commissioners would go off and try to sort out some of the issues around the lights on Arnold Field and the middle school fields. And the reason we haven't come back yet is because we are still sorting that out, unfortunately. I think where negotiations are right now, it would not be in the best interest of that process continuing smoothly to have a public meeting where we pore over all of the details. I am optimistic that we will have something to present to the public, and then we will be ready for public feedback. We will hear everyone, we will change our plans, as makes sense. But at this moment, it's purely just a matter of the work that we wanted to do has not been completed, and we are not yet ready to come back.
Commissioners off.
Thank you, President Sinna, and I agree with and appreciate your remarks. To Mr. Meyer, there are valid concerns about use and development of Oakwell. So members of this Board are working to assist the school board to find other fields and other field options, and doing so appropriately. And the Sustainability Manager is not a czar. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners off. Vice President Gavin.
Thank you, President Sinna. And she is wonderful, but she is not a czar. You are correct. And to respond also to Mr. Meyer, thank you. We've had conversations over time about this, and I appreciate always coming to us and being, you know, forthright with your concerns, with your opinions on this. A couple of things. The decision to allow the middle school field, the middle school, Black Rock, to go where it went, tear down a historic building, was a gut-wrenching decision for a lot of us on this Board. It was something that, on balance, at least I can speak for myself, something I voted for, something I supported because of the strong need to build a new school. It wasn't something I liked to do, it wasn't something I was excited about doing, but there was a need there, and it wasn't done carte blanche, right? There were a lot of conditions put on the school district to do that, right? That is our job, is to, you know, make sure the development is done as well as possible, whether it's done by the school board or a private developer or anyone else. Similarly, with the fields, not giving carte blanche to the school to do whatever they want as well. And we have a responsibility to protect the development within the township. I think we have appropriately protected that. I don't think anyone on this Board has said, "We don't want fields there, there are no fields, you know, go figure it out elsewhere." It has been, you know, when it's done, it needs to be done right. And as Commissioner Courtney said, we are working actively with the school district to kind of, to come up with a solution that works both for their needs, because there are real needs. And I will tell you personally, I have two daughters who play field hockey at Black Rock Middle School. Their practices were all at Gladwin Elementary, or Gladwin Elementary School. So they were driving 15, you know, on the bus 15 minutes. It was less than ideal. Everyone recognizes it's less than ideal. So we do have this give and take in trying to come up with a better solution, and we are actively working towards it. And, you know, hearing from the public, hearing from you, hearing from people in the Save Oakwell organization, hearing from a number of people with all different views is so powerful and so important, and really pushes us to come up with as good a solution as possible. So again, just want to thank you, let you know that this is not a Board that's sitting here with our arms crossed and saying, "Nope, not going to do it, go figure something else out," because that's not how we operate. And as, again, Commissioner Courtney said, hopefully we will shortly have something that we can present out and say, "Hey, we've come up with a wonderful solution." Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Gavin. Commissioner Sean Kramer.
I'd like to thank all of the commenters, and I'd especially like to thank Ms. Gillen for your comment, for keeping us accountable regarding our behavior that you expect us to bring our best. And I think that's fair and appropriate and a wonderful reminder. I think that, I also appreciate, you know, that you're raising the bar and saying, "Let's remember not to think, you know, not to assume ill will of one another." I think that, I don't think anybody here brings, you know, does what they do with ill will, with ill intent. And that's one of the things I love about this Board, is that we all are really here to serve the community, and I hear that you expect that, and you should. And thank you for advocating for yourself and for your neighbors. I think that's what everybody here deserves, and I think those are good words to keep in mind. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Kramer. Any other commissioners wish to respond to public privilege? Seeing none, we're now onto public comment. This is a section of our meeting where members of the public may address the Board on any agenda items, with the exception of the proposed budget and capital improvement program, because that will have a separate period for comments. So this is a place to comment on the proposed tax levy and the ward maps, as the items. So again, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. If there's a group of people speaking on the same topic, again, we ask that a spokesperson be selected. Anyone in the room wish to take advantage of public comment? Seeing none?
Ms. Seltzer is online.
Okay. Please turn my camera on.
Hi, do you know- Ms. Seltzer again. President Sinna, I want to apologize, I was basing my comments during public privilege based on, at the building and planning meeting, comments, instructions given by Commissioner Grimes, that we were voting on advertising the map, not having a discussion on the map. So that's why I made them during public privilege of the floor. So do I have to read them over again?
No, we were carrying them forward. You're great. I completely, you know, it's confusing to me, and I have Jody's script here, so, like, completely, you know, I think it's all good.
Okay. So, but Jamie Michael, president of the League of Women Voters, is in a meeting now, and I would like to, I would like to say some of her comments. The whole way of doing these maps is there's a lack of transparency. And an in-house deal done by a Board that passed a resolution that said they didn't want these types of things is just not the way it should be. She encourages you to put the brakes on and get outside help. She is available to help. She is an expert that we are really lucky to have in our township, as is Amanda Holt is also available. But taking that together with the comments that I made earlier about the lines, I really want you to put the brakes on this and have this done with more transparency and public input. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Seltzer. Jody, anyone else online?
There is none.
Okay. Does any Board member wish to respond to any of the public comment? Yeah, Commissioner Grimes.
Thank you, President Sinna. I'm going to give a very abbreviated response along the lines of what I said last week. I suspect that the Board is going to vote to advertise a new ward map tonight, and assuming we do that, that is the start of a public comment period, and there will be public hearings. So certainly, any resident, be it someone who's spoken tonight or any other member of the public, is welcome to take a look at those maps and offer whatever input they want. And this Board, if we choose to make changes to whatever is proposed, has the ability to do that if we want. So nothing has been settled in stone. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Grimes. Anyone else? So I will- So I will, I will add that because Ms. Seltzer spoke on behalf of Ms. Mogul, Ms. Mogul did email me, and I did respond to her, to reply to her email, suggesting that we get together and meet. I haven't heard back yet, but hopefully that will happen, because she certainly graciously offered her advice. Any else? Okay. So we're now onto the consent calendar. Would anyone like to remove any items from consent? All right, seeing none. Now move that we approved the consent calendar as presented. Thank you, Vice President Gaver. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. President, for the adoption of the consent calendar as presented. Mr. Churchill.
Yes.
Mr. Courtney.
Yes.
Mr. Gaver.
Aye.
Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
Ms. Kramer.
Yes.
Mr. McComb.
Yes.
Mr. McCain.
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil.
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson.
Aye.
Mr. Wallen.
Yes.
Mr. Zello.
Aye.
Mr. Sinai.
Yes.
The consent calendar is duly adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We will now move on to the public hearing on the proposed 2023 budget, the proposed 2023 through 2028 capital improvement program. It's on page 27 of your packet. And so this is our public hearing, and, you know, I will remind my fellow commissioners that this is the meeting where we get to hear from the public on the 2023 budget and 2023-2028 capital improvement plan. We will have a meeting on November 30th, which will be the second public hearing, which is when we get to present our amendments, and we're going to try and organize it, you know, our part of it that way. But this is our, this is our listening meeting. And this public hearing was authorized for advertisement at a stated meeting of the Board of Commissioners, held October 19th, 2022, and duly advertised in the November 6th, 2022 edition of the Main Line Times in suburban. And as I said, a second public hearing will be held on Wednesday, November 30th, 2022, at approximately 6:00 p.m. But that will open the public hearing, and I recognize our chief financial officer, Eric Trout.
Thank you, President Sinai. And why, Jody, can't I share a screen? Oh, I don't think it's, yeah, no. No, has Zoom joined the meeting? Is this not, do they not join it?
All right. So sorry about that delay here, but I think you'll all be excited to know that this is going to be far, far shorter than last week's presentation. I just want to give a quick overview, quick selection of slides just to reorient the board and any members of the public who might be here, who might be hearing about the budget for the very first time. So you have a 2023 budget before you. The total is $75.6 million in the general fund. There is no proposed increase to the real estate taxes, to the other information in terms of variances versus the previous year's budget. In terms of where the money comes from, you know, it's really a three-legged stool. The first is real estate taxes. The second is really all your other taxes, and then the third is your licenses, permits, departmental revenues, and other revenues. In terms of how that differs year over year, you can see the changes here. Business taxes have been stronger than anticipated, while they declined from their record highs in 2021. Departmental earnings have increased due to police services, parking rebounds, and then also recreation program fees that have increased a lot. You know, the only decline we have is a small one in terms of local services tax. We are anticipating some potential decreases overall in jobs in the township if the economy weakens. In terms of where the money goes, you know, I'm disappointed that Commissioner Bernheim is not here, because I altered this slide per his suggestion to carve out police and fire, and, you know, he ditched me tonight, so hopefully he hears this on repeat. But you can see that public safety is the biggest portion of the budget. Debt service is also a fairly decent part, and you see the configuration of all the other departments here. When you look at this slide, again, we talk about, we talk a lot about how many people we have, hiring new people, debate those things vigorously, because people and their benefits are the lion's share of the general fund. We talk a lot about CIP projects and how much the township is funding, because that drives that debt service portion. Everything else, while still very important, you know, in and of itself, does not drive the budget picture quite as much. In terms of, when you compare budget to budget on the expenditure side, you see obviously an increase in salaries. That includes a budgetary contingency due to expiring labor contracts. Debt services increase based upon the fact that we issued a higher level of debt in 2022 to take advantage of what were lower interest rates in the first half of the year. And then when you look down on the other side, equipment, software, and furniture, that's for new purchases of anything of that nature. We just have less new purchases this year. In terms of the main three kind of expenditure, or largest expenditure categories, personnel, we have five new positions in the approved budget. Obviously, I think you'll probably also be talking about the proposed staffing that library suggested at last week's meeting. In terms of overall, you see the number of FTEs at 482 versus 476 last year. In terms of employee benefits, the township and its membership and its health insurance cooperative continue to deliver strong results for the township. The premium increases have really been minimal for this year. However, we are anticipating a higher cost just due to more employees. Hopefully, we won't have quite the level of vacancies we've had this year. In terms of debt services, I mentioned, is increasing a little bit because we issued higher debt than we normally do in early 2022. That ended up being a good thing, given the rise in interest rates in terms of the fact that this was all fixed debt. Overall, in terms of, you know, overall debt service, 13.2%, still generally trending in a downward direction over the last several years. When you look at the CIP, again, $41.5 million of projects township-wide. They're generally, have been funded by general obligation bonds. We also have ARP funds, and there are additional ARP funds, of which the board may want to consider allocating to future CIP projects as the board goes through its process on allocating those ARP dollars. This is just a quick look at the top projects. The Ardmore Avenue Community Center, traffic network, that's a lot of either road improvements, also signalized intersections, things of that nature. And then where does all of this leave the general fund overall in terms of an updated financial forecast? You know, we look like we're ending 2022 in a really good place. You know, that's a positive thing. What, what looks forward to in 2023, we have a $5.2 million budgeted deficit. That's less than last year, but still is, is a deficit of a decent size. It's something we can manage, given the very strong fund balance we'll enter the year in. But there could be financial challenges as we go forward. We hope to continue to outperform these projections, as we have mainly in past years, but it is difficult to project, especially with the unknown on labor costs and things of that nature. This just shows you again, both the revenue and expenditures historically, the fund balance, and how that fund balance has increased or decreased. You see kind of the big lull there, the COVID, the main COVID year, and the big rebound that we had that's helped us in comparison with the township's fund balance policy. And then obviously, we're having our first public hearing tonight. In two weeks, we'll be the second public hearing, and then hopefully adoption on December 14th. So hopefully that was quick enough, and happy to answer any questions or give right to public comment.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Trout. So, so the way this works is that we will have public comment first, and then we'll close the public hearing, and then we'll have Commissioner responsive comment and any questions, if you have any questions still. So is there any public comment on the budget or CIP from anyone in the room? If so, please come forward to the podium and introduce yourself.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Lorde Buckley. I live in Gladwin, and I grew up in Penn Valley. And I am very relieved to hear about the confirmation from my friend Patricio that the funding for this building of the skate park in Lower Marion has been secured. I am here to express my gratitude and share a short personal story of the impact this decision has on my family and many other families in my area. I have four children, ages 17, 16, 14, and 12. All my children have done well through the years, with an exception of my 14-year-old son Achilles. He was my one child who hated school and had trouble making friends due to his anxiety and nervousness. Every day was a battle getting him into school. Corona did not help the matter. School administrators and teachers would help me get him out of the car. He has an IEP, was failing his classes, refused to do any schoolwork, and had absolutely no motivation to improve his situation. Achilles was a very active child. I always thought he would become a famous X-Games athlete. However, he refused to play any team sports and isolated in his room, gaming on his computer. I was very concerned about him, especially starting high school. I even spoke to Welsh Valley this past spring about holding him back a year. They did not suggest this, and I had no idea what to do to help him. A few short months later, this past summer, there was a sudden change in my son. Achilles, now a ninth grader at Harrington, is a completely different child. Skateboarding has changed his life, which in turn changed mine. When the skate park opened in Narberth, he grabbed his older sister's skateboard and began skating. Through this opportunity, he began to make friends, completely coming out of his shell. Now he has great friends, is very verbal, social, and confident, is outside and physically active, is happy to go to school every day, does his homework most of the time, and is finally getting decent grades, and he's getting pretty good at skateboarding also. It has helped him in every way possible, and my concern for him has been lifted. I am thrilled that there will be a new skate park built in Lower Marion, beginning in 2023. To reiterate again, our community is very grateful that funding is allocated for this new skate park in Lower Marion, and is now secured for this purpose, providing a safe space and place for our children to go and to grow, to practice their sport in our township. I look forward to hearing of a secured site of a location for this skate park. I thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make comment?
Laura Gillan, Haverford, I want $500. I want a specific line item for communication with the owners of historic resources and contributing resources in historic districts. We have asked for this kind of communication for a number of years. We need a specific outreach to the residents to inform us of the status of their homes and how to navigate the very difficult historic preservation process in Lower Marion Township. In December, you are going to see a recommendation from the Historic Commission and the Historic Architectural Review Board to accept the draft guidelines that we've been talking about. And with that recommendation, they are actually giving you two additional considerations. One of those is communication with us. I was a little bit frustrated that the development of the guidelines didn't actually include public collaboration in any kind of manner that engaged us in communication. The meetings were announced as required, but there was no engagement, no flyers or announcements of great excitement. The guidelines ironically are supposed to encourage the public to adopt historic preservation and be, engage in, and own it, and really come to embrace historic preservation. But if you don't communicate with us, you don't get that. I believe that $500 could be and should be put in the Public Information Office Advertising and Printing category. I don't have any faith that building and planning really has any interest in engaging those of us until we have to appear before the HC or the Harb. I believe some funds could be moved potentially from the communication line on the Township Manager's Office. It does seem like the addition of a second cell phone shouldn't double the cost, but a second line on the same plan should be at a discount. So I believe there may be some money in a communication line that could be moved to a communication line for the purpose of communicating with those of us who are affected by historic preservation in this township. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room wish to make public comment? Jody, do we have anyone online?
I was looking at your agenda for the Finance Committee, the American Rescue Plan allocation adjustment.
Sorry, Ms. Seltzer, I actually need you to introduce yourself each time, if you just don't mind.
I'm sorry. Adrian Seltzer-Winwood. I'm sorry. You would think you would know me by now, but I know we have to do it. So for the American Rescue Plan allocation adjustment, you're rescinding an allocation of $410,000 for staff bonuses, and instead allocating $261,000 to support essential government services, and $54,377 to reimburse costs incurred by completing a community needs program.
Ms. Seltzer, I think you're talking about something that was on consent that we already voted on, because right now we're talking about the budget and the capital improvement program.
I was just wondering what happens to the other $95,000.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
There is no.
Okay. All right. So this is now going to be the, the point where, let's see, it's going to be questions from us for staff or responsive public comments, you know, just in the, in the interest of, of, you know, providing information. Maybe you could just quickly speak to Ms. Seltzer's question, even though it was something that we already voted on, just to explain it. Well, sorry.
Sure. The reduction in the allocation for staff bonuses is because that was all that was paid out for staff bonuses. So the remainder is being reallocated. Some of it is being allocated to the community needs assessment that the board authorized, and the balance simply goes back into the total amount the board still has available to allocate for ARP uses for other purposes.
Okay, thank you, Madam McNeely. Okay, so now back on our regular agenda, any commissioners with response to comments or questions at this point? Commissioner McKeon.
Thank you, President Sinai. I just wanted to comment on the status of the skate park, which I think is a great idea. In our budget, the CIP capital improvement plan, it is, it's a five-year program that we have. We vote on it year to year, and then we raise the projects or lower them based on where we see it as a priority for the township. So what's before us in 2023 that we're going to be voting on this year is engineering and design that would be paid for by the township of $50,000. After that, there's additional engineering and design and construction, which would be over $500,000. In the CIP, that's not something we would vote on until 2024, so it's a couple-stage process, just so everyone's aware. But we're looking at multiple locations. There's one behind the Belmont Hills Pool that I think might be a very good location. So there, you know, it's moving along, but we're not going to be able to vote and approve everything this year, because that's just not how the CIP works.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner McKeon. Any other commissioners? Mr. Zello.
Thank you, President Sinai. With regard to Ms. Gillan's comments, direct communication about, from the township to historic property owners makes so much sense, something we need to do a better job of. We know who they are. It's easy to send snail mail or email, but we've got to do something that's effective and reaches all of them. It costs so little, it doesn't need its own line item in the budget, but it is something that Ms. Gillan has raised a number of times, and unlike her earlier comments... It costs so little, it doesn't need its own line item in the budget, but it is something that Ms. Gillen has raised a number of times. And unlike her earlier comment this evening on this one, she's right. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Zellner. Okay, any other Commissioners? Seeing none. I guess that closes the end of public hearing of the budget. We will do this again on November 30th. And now we'll move on to Finance Committee, and the next item on our agenda is on page 28 of your packet, and that is to advertise proposed tax levies. So I will move that we approve authorizing the Township Secretary to advertise notice of intent to adopt an ordinance imposing a levy for general revenue purposes on all taxable real estate in the township in the amount of 4.19 mils on each $1 assessed valuation, adopting an annual budget and appropriating specific sums estimated to be required for the purposes of the municipal government for the 2023 fiscal year and approving the 2023 through 2028 capital improvement program. I will note that 4.9 mils is the same mileage rate as was in 2022. And I will also note that we are just advertising at this point because we are continuing to have hearings and can continue to amend. Do I have a second? Thank you, Commissioners Zellner. I guess, Commissioner, questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor? Sorry, Jody, just roll or just raise your hand?
No.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Sentions? And that seems to carry. This score was everyone to zero of the people who are here, and I think that is 12. Okay, yes, thank you. Okay, so next item on our agenda is the authorization to advertise ward maps on page 32 of your package. So so before I read a motion, I need to ask, you know, for Manager McNeely to bring us and the public up to speed on this.
Certainly, Commissioner. President Sinai, the board asked staff to take a look, and and our responsibility under the law is to redistrict, to to have wards as close in population as is practical. Staff has looked at that and has not regarded any kind of registration, Democrat or Republican, has simply looked at population, but has done so within a whole variety of constraints that include congressional districts, legislative districts, census tracts, and magisterial districts. As we proceeded through the process and tried to equalize wards, all of those constraints make some some adjustments very, very difficult to make. The draft you were considering tonight reduces the disparity between wards, but still leaves one with over 11% difference between the the highest and lowest. We have been seeking further directions from the county and the court system. The only advice we have been able to really glean from from those sources is that we need to do what we feel is best. We may consider the magisterial districts that currently exist, or we also are made aware that there is a proposed change to the magisterial districts that have been submitted to the Pennsylvania Supreme Court by the county. They've not been acted on, so at this point, they are purely proposed magisterial districts. In talking with county solicitors and the solicitor for the court system, we basically come down to the point where we are advised to, A, the best option would be to try and follow the proposed new magisterial districts and respect those boundaries, but if they do not allow us to appropriately, in the in the board's mind, equalize wards' population, then we are free to go ahead and propose wards as we see fit that would, as best we can, equalize population, considering all those other constraints. And when it goes to the county, two things will happen. The county will review it in the in the Elections Office, in the Office of Voter Services, and they will make comments, but then it goes to a common pleas judge to put his stamp of approval on. That judge may decide that it's appropriate and and give it an okay. That judge may also take a look at magisterial district boundaries and and depending on what happens with their request to the Pennsylvania Supreme Court, that judge could actually reject our redistricting, as did happen to the township roughly eight years ago when a plan was submitted and it was rejected because it did not respect magisterial district boundaries. So at this point, you have a map that respects current magisterial district boundaries and tries to respect all of the other census tract legislative congressional district boundaries. We did provide you with a redraft of a map this evening that actually takes a look at the proposed magisterial district boundaries and makes adjustments to equalize wards even further, but now respecting the magisterial district boundaries where possible, but still violating at least one of the proposed new magisterial district boundaries. You have a right to submit that map or the map that's under consideration tonight. We just cannot tell you what will happen when it goes to the county and to the courts. It may be advisable to take a further look and say, what if we could try and adjust and stay within all of the proposed magisterial district boundaries? It unfortunately may force us then to make the wards a little more out of out of whack, out of out of proportion. But it's something we could we could ask our GIS GIS folks in building and planning to take a look at. So you have several options. You could propose the map that's on the agenda. You could propose the map that we have given you tonight. No matter which you do, you can always adjust that at public hearing. In fact, you can pass something totally different when we get to a public hearing in December and then advertise what you've changed, but that's not the greatest path for total transparency and and public input. You could also choose to put this off and give us a little more time to take a look at those proposed magisterial district boundaries and come back perhaps on November 30th and have another discussion and perhaps then have a vote to advertise a revised map that would get then go to a December agenda for approval. And of course, you have other options to, if you chose to, to hire a consultant or take any kind of public input. Our maps have been out there now. They've been part of two public agendas that have been published and made available, so they're certainly out there. If anybody wants to comment or make suggestions for revisions, they're certainly available.
Okay, thank you, Manager McNeely. So before I go to to forecomment, I'll go first, I'm going to make a motion. You know, I appreciate that explanation and I very much appreciate all the work that you and staff have gone through to try and figure out from the county, like, how this works. And I am very grateful to the building and planning staff, who have spent countless hours tweaking and working with with GIS in, you know, what is really a mind-numbing process of trying to do this. You know, here's the situation as I see it. You know, the maps that were circulated, you know, a week and a half ago, were ones that conformed to the old magisterial district boundaries, or the current ones. I think the guidance we got from the county is like, that is probably the least likely to be approved because those are going to become defunct. The we have what we've received, you know, today, I got it at 5:30 for a chance to look at it, was maps that that, you know, don't conform to any magisterial district boundaries, right? They're the unconstrained maps. And of course, the public hasn't had any chance to see those at all. And then what we don't have yet is to know what maps would look like if they conformed to the new magisterial district boundaries and how close we could get to the unconstrained ones before we decide whether to, you know, take the gamble of submitting maps that don't, you know, that violate the magisterial district boundaries and hoping the courts approve them versus ones that do conform to the proposed magisterial district boundaries. And and so and so that means that this board, you know, needs some information that we don't currently have as well, right? So between the fact that we haven't really been able to circulate things to the public and we don't have our full set of information, I think it is appropriate to table, so I need to move that we table this to November 30th to have the opportunity for, I have a zillion seconds. Okay. Any discussion of that?
Is there a second?
A zillion.
Yes.
Okay, so any comments? Okay. Sorry. Commissioner McCann.
I think that makes perfect sense. I think we are dealing with many vulnerabilities here, and it's just, it's important to try and get it right. I think I think there's no downside to pushing it down the road till the 30th, we'll have a better sense. And I think staff has already indicated that we're pretty close to the finish line once we get some more information. So I think that makes a lot of sense.
Okay. Then I guess all those in favor, raise your hand. Opposed? Sentences? Okay, the ayes have it, and that carries unanimously. So next item is unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business that come before the board? Okay, seeing none. Is there any new business to come before the board? Commissioner Whalen.
Thank you, President Sinai. I would like to move to add an item to our agenda, that item being the potential appeal of the Lower Marion zoning hearing board decision in Appeal Number 4554 regarding 637 East Lancaster Avenue dated October 20th, 2022, and served on October 21st, 2022.
Second.
Oh, right, I'm actually running this. I mentally hand this over to you.
You're the czar for all intents and purposes.
The you, I'll get some. I don't even have any quip to say about that.
I also just really like staring at you.
Okay. Next year, we're going to seat you farther down the deck. So the, okay, so any any Commissioner comment? All right, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed?
Don't we have to first vote to put?
We're voting. Yes, that's what we're doing. Okay, so just to be clear, we're voting, putting on the agenda. All those in favor, putting on the agenda? Okay, opposed? Sentences? Okay, it's on the agenda. Commissioner Whalen, would you like to be recognized?
Yes, I would. Thank you very much, President Sinai. I would move, make a motion to this, that this Board of Commissioners move to appeal the decision, the Lower Marion zoning hearing board decision in Appeal Number 4554 regarding 637 East Lancaster Avenue dated October 20th, 2022, and served on October 21st, 2022.
Second.
Okay, the motion is made and seconded. Any Commissioner questions or comments? Seeing none? Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Sentences? Oh, sorry, did public comment? I apologize. Okay, thank you. Any public comment on this? We'll come back to that in a second.
Laura Gillen-Haverford, can I ask what this is about? There's no issue briefing on this that we could have read in advance or understood if it had been on the agenda. So any information that you'd like to provide on what this vote means? I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
President Sinai, our solicitor would like to speak.
I think I can answer that. There was a decision rendered with respect to the property. It's going to be a proposed gas station by Giant. As you know, there were new zoning provisions that have been put in place. There were multiple variances granted by the zoning hearing board from those new provisions, and there is one that the Board of Commissioners objects to, and that is the variance from a 200 separation, 200-foot separation distance between a underground gas tank and a residential structure. They don't meet it. The board excused it. That's why it's being appealed.
Thank you, Seltzer. So so now we've had that explanation. I need to give the public opportunity, anyone wishes to make public comment again?
I'm here.
Okay. So hang on a second. Anyone in the room, hang on one second. Anyone in the room wish to make public comment? Okay, so now, and Ms. Gillen, I appreciate you asking that question because we should have done that, and I appreciate that. Okay, so Ms. Seltzer.
I was going to ask the same question, and when you switch somebody from just on Zoom as an attendee to a panelist, everything goes blank, so I didn't hear what the gentleman said about Giant and the gas station completely. I'm sorry.
Sure, I'm happy to repeat that. Hopefully, it'll be a little bit shorter. It was a variance case before the zoning hearing board for the gas station at the corner of Winwood and Lancaster Avenue, proposed by Giant. The board granted a variance from one provision, well, several provisions, but one provision in particular of the new zoning ordinance, which requires a 200-foot separation between an underground storage tank and a residential facility. They do not meet that. The board excused that, and that's what the appeal is about.
So I'm totally confused. So does that mean the board wants a 200-foot?
No, the board wants to protect the integrity of its zoning ordinance and ensure that the 200-foot isolation distance is met.
Okay, thank you, too. Okay, thank you, Ms. Seltzer. I think that is it for Jody. Anyone else online for public comment?
No.
Okay. So with that, apologies to my fellow members for, this is why Jody writes a script for me. So the, all those in favor of the motion that was made and seconded, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Sentences? That passes 12 to zero. And believe it or not, I believe that is, concludes the business of the Board of Commissioners of Lower Marion for this evening. We are adjourned.